Call this regular meeting of Grand Forks City Council to order. First item of business is to adopt the agenda. What I have is a number of late items that we're putting under 12A. That include the DMAP resolutions from this morning. Basically, that the commitment to the downtown economic development strategy. And the final is the council remuneration. So those will be all included under 12A and they will come up on the board when we get to them. So a motion to adopt the agenda with that addition of 12A. Counselor Thompson, second Counselor Corlack, call those in favor. And the adoption of the public hearing from June 24th. Public hearing. Counselor Corlack, Counselor Krog, all those in favor? Adoption of the special go-in camera minutes, June 24th. Counselor Studley, Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? And the regular meeting of June 24th, regular minutes. Counselor Studley, Counselor Corlack, is there anything other than that? Did I hear somebody had wanted to raise an issue from the irregular meeting? Counselor Moslin?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship.
Is this arising from that or correction?
I guess so. My point is not so much business arising from the minutes, but the procedures that got us to those minutes. In those minutes, there were four motions that were not introduced to council prior to the meeting and weren't introduced in writing. And I guess what I'm asking from council is some understanding, please, that being old and hard of hearing, they don't think that well. And the taxpayer will get way more money out of me if I have a chance to study motions, even briefly, before they're put in front of me. It also gives our staff a chance to provide guidance, Your Worship. And, you know, I'm all for council reports and all for that. Please, I'm asking my fellow councilors to be mindful that those motions coming out that aren't in writing are difficult sometimes to follow and to think clearly about during the course of a meeting. Sorry, I'm limited that way. Anyhow, that's my... I did look for a procedural bylaw for guidance, but there is no guidance on that issue. So I'm just sort of bringing it to council's attention. Could you be considerate and put if motions you want to bring motions forward, bring them through either through your council report or get them on the agenda ahead of time?
Well, and...
Thank you, Your Worship.
It's right to be reminded of that and I think we've already taken due notice of what happened in that meeting. Thank you. Now you throw me off. Did we have an adoption on that or were we in the midst of it?
No, I'm fine, Your Worship.
We were.
It's not...
It's not. We had a motion to adopt. And who seconded it? Counselor Krog?
One of us.
Not one of us, but all those in favor. That's adopted in those minutes. The next is the release of in-camera minutes from June 10th regarding the purchase of Seventh Avenue properties. And that council released the in-camera for June 10th requesting regarding the in-camera minutes related to the purchase of A to D on 70th Avenue. This was a detailed release of information. Most of it was released, but this was the detailed step-by-step motion to release that information?
Well, that's already done, Mr. Mayor. I simply added that for context, that that was the resolution that was passed by council at the time.
That was carried by council.
In the in-camera meeting, correct.
Okay, and we're just going to accept the minutes then from this?
No, it's good like this.
We don't do anything with it?
Yep, no.
Do we not have to? We've already made that motion.
Yeah, it was already released. This was simply the process to get it out to the public now through the agenda. I'll make that a little more clear next time.
Yeah, when I get nothing to do, I get nervous. And bringing us down to council reports, we have this evening council reports from three councilors. And I would ask that Counselor Studley be our first up.
I attended the Canada Day celebrations and the broadcast that happened at the Gem Theater. Both seemed like really great events. Had a meeting with the RCMP, Susan's Home Control, Block Watch, DA, and Governance Plus. A couple of things was known that came out of that meeting. They thought there was more room for our bylaw services to sort of enforce the more public safety-related bylaws. They thought that the police suggested that we advocate more to get more police in. They said that that is a thing that we could do. And there were concerns about Second Street or any similar projects.
Thank you, Counselor. That floor. Pardon?
I'm sorry, just for clarification, we have written reports and they become part of the package. My understanding was if something has come up since that report, or there was a part of that report that that member wanted to talk about, that they would bring it forward. So I just want to... Are we just going around reading the reports?
No, after we... Yeah, after we go through the ones that are submitted, then we open it up to anybody making a verbal report? That's the way I've been doing it.
Okay, but so is Counselor Moslin there to read his report? Do you understand where I'm going with it?
No.
Okay, we put in a written report.
Yeah.
Because it's part of the council. If anybody has questions on a person's report.
Right.
At this part of the thing, that's when we would ask those questions.
Yeah.
If anybody has something further to their report, or a motion in their report, that they would actually talk about it, not just reiterate what's in the report. It was done for a reason to streamline it. So I'm just... It doesn't seem like that's what we're doing, just wondering.
Okay, and I go back to Counselor Studley then. Is there any motions or anything further that you missed since this report was issued a week and a half ago?
Not at this point. Those are just some thoughts to put in council's ears.
All right, is that...
Yeah, no, I'm just sitting there thinking, if we're going to have verbal reports, then we don't need to have written reports.
Or vice versa.
It's working pretty good so far, but...
But it's worked for the past five or six years, or at least the last three years. Never mind.
Procedural issue here, but we could certainly bring that up again. Counselor Thompson is next.
Thank you, Your Worship. Because I know what Counselor Krog was saying, did you want me to read out my report?
No, that's what I'm wondering, if that's what we're doing, is going around reading out the reports.
Some do, some don't.
Okay, because I'm happy to read my report out loud if there are people that are watching on TV haven't had the opportunity to review the agenda.
Okay, I see that. That would be...
Yeah, bearing in view of your indulgence, I will read my report.
Yes.
I attended the announcement of the DMFA grant funding by parliamentary secretary to the premier Jennifer Rice. This is exciting news for the boundary area and Grand Forks in particular. Along with Counselor Corlack, we took the opportunity that morning to have a brief discussion with the parliamentary secretary. We thanked her for the government's and B.C. housing support in building the 52 units of affordable housing behind the women's transition house. We also advised her of the way the Second Street project was announced to our downtown business community and that the previous council was not aware of this until the day before a letter was circulated. We advised her that the members of the DVA were upset that such a project was to be built at the east entrance to our city, particularly as most downtown businesses had been devastated by the 2018 flood and were in recovery mode. We also advised that B.C. housing would not consider another location until the lots on 70th Avenue were offered. However, due to public outcry, the offer was withdrawn. The parliamentary secretary had not viewed the Second Street location and we gave her directions to there from the Ninth Street in recognition. The GFI was certainly a huge success for our city. I want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank the organizers of this tournament for all their hard work over the past year in organizing this annual event. I sold 50/50 tickets on Sunday morning and really enjoyed it. I said that I would like to do some more morning shifts next year selling tickets. I watched the Canada Day parade and thought it was a great success. I am aware of the controversy one-fold caused that was deemed anything but celebratory. Counselors Corlack, Moslin, and I served 200 cupcakes to attendees and that was always part of the fun for me. The vendors and entertainment were excellent. Job well done by our events manager, Aaron Allen. That's my report.
Great, I appreciate you being there, helping Canada Day, as Counselor Corlack was there as well. I would just like to say that the people who were uncomfortable with one of the floats, I'm assuming we're talking about the Whispers of Hope float. I found that to be an extremely courageous move by those folks who are so dehumanized and abused at times within our community that they would actually have remaining dignity and pride to stand up and march in a parade. So well done to those people. Thank you. And further reports, Counselor Moslin?
Thank you, Your Worship. I won't read my report, just to try to summarize it quickly. We did meet with the Grand Forks Social Service Advisory Group on July of 9th. I've really got my hopes pinned that this group is going to provide us with some recommendations from a spectrum of the community and will carry on a conversation in a reasonable way and provide factual information at the table for what services will best fit our community. I did put a notice of motion there that X amount of money be budgeted to support the work of this advisory group, but they haven't requested any money as of yet. So they're looking more for administrative secretary support if necessary. So far, they haven't made the request, but I'm hoping to support them just by going and trying to be listening, like I've done most of the day, to all the sides of this debate on social services. The Roger Brooks To-Do List, well, we got a good presentation this morning from Amber in the Downtown Business Association on the To-Do List. There was some discussion around, within our council email forum, about the mural painting of what I call the copycat wall. Frankly, that would seem to be getting off cheap for city, a thousand bucks, as I think we have a lot more skin in the fire, so to speak, than $1,000, probably just in staff time alone. Nonetheless, I am putting it out there, is there a wish by council to make a contribution towards that mural painting?
Counselor Studley making that as a motion, Counselor Moslin?
Definitely, I would support that motion.
And that puts it on the table for discussion, Counselor Thompson?
Okay. You have to turn this off. Thank you. As much as I would love to support this resolution, because I think it's just going to be a wonderful asset to our community, the building is privately owned and my reading of the Act precludes municipality from making a contribution to an individual business. I realize that that building houses several businesses and so I suppose it could be argued that it wouldn't be just to the benefit of one individual or one property or... But there are other ways that the city can contribute. I personally made a contribution to it because I think it's a very worthwhile project, but I, for the reasons I've stated, I cannot support the resolution as it is. And I believe we've received advice from our managers that support my position on this. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further, Counselor Krog?
Yeah, I saw that and I considered it because if you look at wooden spoons, it is the wooden spoon, right? It's the side of their building, it promotes their business. It's awesome, right? This one faces a bunch of this end of market. I believe the plans have nothing to do with business. It may be bike-themed, it may be something, but it's not anything to do with travel agencies or health food stores or whatever. I looked at that building and I think that would be awesome if it was painted and then you just drive around and you can find three or four more canvases. And I'm thinking, why not? Why not start doing murals around town while we have that artist here? So not only put in towards that mural, but other ones as well.
So we're speaking in favor of the motion?
Yeah.
Further on this, Counselor Zalinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the town that I came from, we had a mural project there. And the way we got around not supporting the business is there was an agreement between the city and the owner of the building to make sure that that mural stayed there for a length of time and how any alterations and whatnot that was dealt with. So it was a community art project more than just public advertising. And that's how the city was able to contribute to those projects. So whether or not we want to go this route or not.
Counselor Studley?
Just adding to what Rod says, I see Amber's in the audience, I recall something like that being mentioned. Is that still works or completed, having that well allocated for just the mural and no business or nothing and having that mural stay there for a period of time?
Actually, Counselor Studley, you're not supposed to ask her to speak in a regular meeting unless we all agree to it, so...
Do we have a motion on the table? Does that put forward a motion to allow us to speak here?
We have a motion in terms of the $1,000. To just, you wish to answer that question. Counsel, would you approve with her answering this question? Show of hands.
Certainly.
Go ahead, Counselor Studley.
Thank you. I'm not sure the proper term, I have it written down, but there will be a... It's not a right-of-way, but there is a document that will be signed with the building owner that guarantees that it will be there for a certain amount of time regardless of he owns that building or not, so it'll go with the title of the building. If that makes sense?
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Counselor Studley? Any further questions on this matter, Counselor Thompson?
I would just like to ask staff to comment on the legalities of this resolution, please.
Is there any legal consideration here, asking our CFO? Or our CEO?
Yes, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my point to this, legality-wise, it would be great to have an agreement in place before doing anything. We currently don't have the agreement in place. I also know the Economic Development Grant that we have from the RDF, the Rural Development Fund, has some monies that they can commit to this project as well. So that would be provincial dollars and not necessarily city taxpayer dollars, which this would be. Now, $1,000 may not seem much, but I know we're trying to save money here and there. So that would be my concern on that.
Would you have a preference to see?
So one option would be to maybe say that the city could contribute $1,000 if the fundraising doesn't raise enough money and once the agreement is signed, or something like that.
Counselor Moslin's motion? Would you put some condition on it?
That would be fine with me, Mayor. I think the intent there, my intent to bring this up was to show that the city is ready to stand behind these plans. I was cheered to hear the clerk's description of the plans, that yes, we are ready to stand to find out. I would accept his, if my secretary would, his suggestions for amendment.
Secretary, would you accept that, counsel? And Counselor Zalinski, speaking to the amendment?
Yes, requested, cleared up on the screen, so if I'll read the amended version, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to ask where the money's coming from.
Okay.
See, my training's working.
Counselor?
We obviously want to make sure that we're approving a family-friendly slogan on the wall, so I'm just wondering whether or not there's an artist rendering or something that we know what's actually going up there that we can say, yeah, that looks good.
Or could we get one before we put money in it?
Yeah.
Okay, we're getting pretty complex here. There will be various levels of control over what that looks like on the wall. Counselor Thompson?
Thank you. I'm sorry to be negative nelly here, but going back to something that Counselor Corlack said about there's all these other canvases, well, is there going to be an expectation from all these other canvases of building owners that the city is going to contribute monies to those as well? And if we are, where's it going to come from? I just, I can't support, I cannot in good conscience support this as much as I would like to, and I think it's an excellent idea, but I just can't do that today.
Counselor Krog?
Oh, to answer that, I thought about that as well. The one thing is that mural was brought as part of the reviving, right? So if another mural has, not just a business saying, hey, come and paint a mural on my building, like it was picked, it was advocated for, right? So I would expect the same. And if you think about it, if you could beautify this town and your only input was $1,000 a pop, we could have half a dozen different artists come in and do all those blank canvases, as I call them, and it would be unique. Shemainus is mostly by one artist, or just a couple anyways, but... So I think it's part of that momentum. It's the most visual, aside from a major revite, that this town gets to see when we're dealing with all this other crap, that here's something pretty and it's supported by the town. A lot of people went to dinner at Stu's place so that funds would be raised and stuff like that, so, you know, to put in a token amount.
So not a bad precedent to set?
No, no.
And you support the motion at this point in the table?
Yeah.
Further on this, counsel, so this is a conditional offer of $1,000 pending the design and movement forward by the other participants. Ready for the question?
Oh, that's where the money's going as well. Says so.
Counsel Stipens, ready for the question?
So is that okay with counsel?
That's fine.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carry, thank you. And we're still in council reports here.
Yeah, I know, and I won't, just a shout-out to Trails Forbes. They are trying to build up the online representation of our trails. The DMAF announcement, I think it's fair that I do say this in public, as council knows, I have been critical of options set forward in the Dobson report. The underlying assumption is that the only way to adapt to climate change was for the city to abandon some of its floodplains. I can't agree as these lands represent a significant capital and human investment to part of our history. I do hope that as more detailed engineering becomes available, I would like to counsel to reconsider the wholesale expropriation of North Rockhome. I believe Dobson's other option of creating industrial utility lands would be more beneficial to the city. I'm hoping that future engineering will take advantage of the new flood modeling so more of the west shore of the Grand B can be obtained for future high-density development. And my last shout-out to the GFA, just a really big thank you. I was really, it was lots of fun to be involved and I look forward to helping it open again next year.
All right, thank you, counsel. Close enough. Further reports, Counselor Corlack?
Just a quick one. I attended my first, oh gosh, WKBRH, so basically the hospital board meeting, and in Casa Gar. It was very interesting. It's going to be a huge learning curve. Actually, they make a SIF in a curve.
It's huge.
It is. But it was interesting and it'll be great to see what's coming forward out of that. And so on July 26th, I will be sworn in at the REKB. And so then I actually have the official then. I want to congratulate GFI on a job well done. And last thing, I have closed my business and I now can concentrate on some other things, so continue with your vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a comment too, there was quite a ceremony, basically celebrating the work of Jerry Foster and Larry Semenoff at the GFI this year, I think, some two of the people who really have made that work over a long period of time. They both put in many long hours. So yes, I concur with the thinking of the GFI. Further, council reports. Hearing none, can I have a motion to accept council reports? Counselor Corlack, Counselor Studley, all those in favor? Okay, and I am going to forego my regional district report. However, I will answer any questions you have towards the regional district. I'll try and go forward some of these stuff for the next time, but tonight I don't want to venture into anything complex here. We've had a long, long day. So any questions on the regional district? Sorry, we're not getting questions from the floor in the regular meeting, ma'am. Hearing none, then I won't have to support my non-report, but I promise that the next time around I'll have more information from the regional district. And bringing us down to recommendations from staff for decisions, the first item is the amendment of the council's schedule for 2019. There are three meetings, I believe, in November that we're looking at here, November 12th, 25th, in January, or December 16th. Can we support those changes? Counselor Thompson makes the motion and seconded by Counselor Corlack. Discussion? Is it through anyone's schedule off? This has been done really to make things run smoother in that season. Hearing none, all those in favor? Carry. How are we going here? Events insurance, pretty straightforward. It's a rider on our policy that covers... Pretty straightforward. It's a rider on our policy that covers the Ms. Allen as the associate member of the city's MIA BC policy. A motion to that? Counselor Thompson, you've been on that group before? Makes the motion, seconded by Counsel Crock. I knew you were going to vote. Any questions on this? This is a matter of insurance and security here, so it's standard practice. All those in favor? Opposed? Taking us to long-term borrowing. Again, this is a result of decisions that we have made previously. Counselor Zelinski's making the motion for number one.
To get it on the floor.
Okay, so this is to increase our borrowing by $425,000 to basically recognizing the decisions that we have currently made in terms of adjusting our 25-year term borrowing. And discussion. Counsel Zelinski?
So I'd like some, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some input from other counselors here because I just got on the tail end of when this borrowing bylaw was created four years and nine months ago or something like that. But I was under the impression that they were going to be for specific projects. And this, what I've got in front of me kind of indicates that it's just going into the slush fund to pay for whatever. And that kind of concerns me.
I don't believe that's what that 400 is. Could you please speak to those decisions we made?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what we have is we have two long-term borrowing bylaws on our books right now that were passed and, well, started in past 2011, 2012. They're secured by a short-term borrowing, yeah, short-term interim borrowing. What's happened now is the clock has kind of run out on our time, so we have to convert what we have spent on these bylaws into long-term debt. And to do that, we have to have resolutions of council. And it has to go through the regional district because all our borrowing's done through the regional district. And it has to go to the next regional district meeting in order to meet the MFA's August 9th deadline for the fall issue. We currently have promissory notes for the amounts that we have borrowed. If we don't do this, we will have to repay the amounts on the promissory notes to the tune of almost $2 million from reserves or whatever. So we have to repay it. The only alternative is either repay it or we convert these, what we have spent on these borrowing bylaws into long-term debt.
Understood. And this is speaking to motion number one?
Yes, just to clarify that this is already spent money. It's not to top up what the borrowing bylaw asked for just to, so we have the money in our hands? Does that, did I understand?
For me, Mr. Mayor, yes, it is, it's money that we have already spent with a little bit that's currently in the budget to finish off projects.
Okay. Counsel understands the implications of turning this down. It's going to cost us a lot more and mess up our borrow. Ready for the motion? All those in favor? Opposed? And motion number two, which is part of this going forward with $1,495,000 for the regional district as requested, to put this into borrowing for the next term. Motion, Counsel Thompson? Seconded by Counsel Corlick. You're doing it. Question? Those in favor? Opposed? Carry. The next item is the non-medical cannabis license application by Weeds. You have an extensive presentation of information by the company. And number one is to approve or deny the development variance permit application in terms of the setback distance from community use zone. Can I have a motion for number one? Counsel Thompson?
I will move that we deny.
Counsel Mosland, are you seconding that?
No.
No, Counsel Thompson, you're making a negative motion here?
We're making the motion to deny the development variance permit application to reduce from 100 meters to 36 meters the setback distance from a building or structure to a community use zone.
And the seconder for that? Counsel Zelinski?
I would like to speak to the fact that I think we have a very poorly defined community use zone and that this is far-reaching and not the purpose of this particular zoning with the 100-meter setback. I think that was meant to be used judiciously and at this point in time I see it as an overreach of the authority of council to impose this on what is basically an adult-use facility, not a children's facility. As you'll see, the applicant is also made that very clear in various details of their presentation. And so the motion is on the floor to deny this, seconded on the floor.
Further comment? Counsel Mosland?
Yes, Your Worship, I also would like to speak against the motion to deny. I find that the setback quite arbitrary and very naive. There's no way that we're saving children from the influence of this new retail business simply because of 62, 64 meters. Children walk by all the other stores in town as well. So the 100 meters is really kind of, in my mind, nonsensical. It really has nothing to do with it at all. It doesn't protect children at all. I also want to point out, Your Worship, that I did vote to deny the previous, a previous medical cannabis store that was on Central. Because, but I did want to just inform the public and council that I voted against that one, not because of the 100-meter setback, but because the store was actually going to be associated with alcohol.
Right.
And I, that, I don't know, I found that a little bit too cumbersome to have a store selling both alcohol and marijuana. Anyhow, but I do speak against the motion to deny. Thank you.
And further on this, before Counsel Thompson gets a second kick at ten. Other comments from anyone? Counsel Thompson?
Counsel.
Corlick? Come on.
Somebody.
Anyway, I just want to, I'm supporting your resolution, Christine, because once we set a precedent and don't stand up for our bylaws as they are, I think we're just opening the door for more and more. So I think we need to be supportive of what we're doing there, so.
And Counsel Crock and then back to Counsel Thompson?
Yeah, just a question. Just a question through you two staff. When I read the bylaw or the zoning for light industrial, it talks about manufacturing. And most of the other places that are in light, they'll be making something that they actually sell. And I was kind of confused because there was similar family but retail operation down here and retail operation up there, but no manufacturing in the light industrial. So are we allowed to have just a retail-only store in a light industrial?
Okay, that's a specific question to plan?
If they know, if they don't know. I'll make it up.
Yes, they are allowed.
Okay, so they are not in contravention in terms of being a retail outlet? Counsel Thompson?
When the previous council debated that particular bylaw, the 100-meter setback was well-vetted throughout the council. And I cannot support wavering from that. It's, the bylaw is the bylaw. And I think we have to follow what the bylaws say and that it's a permitted use in that area. It's not within 100 meters. So I cannot support and will be supporting my motion to deny the application.
And my speaking again, which is unusual on the matter. I believe that that is a gross overreach and that we should actually remove that bylaw entirely from our list of bylaws. And that there is no scientific support for that contentious issue in terms of this being dangerous, as Counsel Mosland pointed out. There's no data behind this as doing anything troubling in our community other than us making it difficult for someone to do business here. So I think it is an overreach and it should have been removed when we did the corrections earlier to bylaws related to cannabis. It shows us as a non-friendly cannabis community to implement something that at this point in time has no scientific validity, is based on an overreach that we have in the interpretation of community use. Thank you.
Sorry, but the 100 meters was recommended by the province?
100 meters is our rule. It is not a meat.
That 100 meters came with the change in legislation. I'm not sure. We're not the only ones.
No, the 100 meters in the provinces' rules has to do with playgrounds and schools primarily?
Yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying the 100 meter, okay, you're, okay, I get it.
Yeah, this is our restrictive rule that we put in, or the previous council put in place. Any further debate on this matter? So we have a negative motion to deny this applicant on the basis of violation of the bylaw and the setback rule. All those in favor of denying? All those opposed to denying? Three, four, the vote is carried. So the motion is denied. Meaning that we probably are not dealing with motion number two or three at this point in time, since we're saying that it is in violation of the bylaw and won't be accepted on that basis.
I think the second one may still need to be completed because it is a report that has to be accepted.
Okay, can we have a motion for number two? Might as well get it on the floor here. This is to deny or support a report to the province on this recommendation. Counsel Thompson?
I will make the resolution that we receive the report. Well, I'm against the recommendation for the non-medical cannabis store at that location.
Okay. So this is again another negative motion that you are saying that we should negate the recommendation? That it's a little difficult wording.
I know, it is.
Okay, that we're going to deny this application is the question here. You're saying that you would like the motion that we deny?
Yes.
And the seconder for that? Counsel Corlick? Further discussion on this? Counsel Mosland?
The motion is just that we received the report, right? I've had a hard time with the words necessity for the words positive or negative. Just, yeah, okay, we received the report, thanks. I don't get it.
So you believe that we turned it down enough in number one that we don't have to turn it down again in number two? Can I have some help here from?
This must have gotten changed late in the agenda edition. I remember seeing there are negative recommendations from staff for this. But again, I'm trying to sort through this right now.
That was changed.
Yeah, because here's the right resolution. So the report. Yeah, it's not perfect, but it was a negative report from staff and the council just receives that report.
Then what happens with that?
So basically staff will submit the, ultimately, this is courtesy to council to present the report from staff. At the end of the day, it's staff's report that's going to the province. So basically staff is presenting a negative version of the report saying we're sending this to the province just for council to receive.
So you're just advising us what you're intending to do?
Okay, so we've got to take charge here. Counsel Thompson, your motion is to deny this?
No, I will rescind that motion or withdraw that motion and I will put forward the recommended motion
Yeah, it's coming, it's coming.
That we received the negative report. Okay, the council receives the report for a negative recommendation to the non-medical cannabis retail store license application from 1179711 DC Limited Weeds Glass &amp; Gifts at $7,500 from Thompson Drive.
And the seconder for that motion? Counsel Corlick seconded it. Speaking to the motion? Again, I think this is a really bad message to put out there in our community. It is anti-cannabis, non-scientific, and I think we should not be comfortable with this decision. However, are you ready for the question? This is a negative. So if you support Counsel Thompson's motion, you are voting in the negative.
I just got to have a kick at this. You're not voting in the negative. Like, anytime we get a report, we receive the report.
Yeah, that's it.
It doesn't say whether it's negative, positive, or any of it. Just we, because we make the decision. They may define it as a negative or a positive report, but we make the decision, so we should just be receiving the report.
That's it?
So we don't need all the negative stuff.
The council simply needs to receive the report.
Which would mean that you will report that we have not approved. Oh, I thought we already did that, or, yeah.
We're denied the development variance permit.
Now we're denying?
Now you're denying, we're receiving a report that staff is going to send in to the province that says no.
Based on the fact that we have judged that they are in violation of that bylaw?
Yeah.
And there was also other letters plus the IHA letter that's attached to this and things like that.
Sorry, in your package?
Yeah, it's at the very end, appendix four to this.
Okay, counsel, are you ready for the motion on this matter?
Motion, and the new motion is just to receive the report.
Which means the end of their application?
Yes.
Let's be clear to the public. We're confused, they're ignoring.
Yeah, I thought they already.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
I don't know!
I don't know either. Supported the other one, but I also support receiving the report.
And you didn't vote? Was that a positive?
Yeah.
All right, as you can tell, I think this is a bad move, but I won't dwell on it anymore.
You mean we're not going to hear about it?
You will.
Remember that whole "I told you" thing that I brought up earlier today?
All right, next item of business is the consideration of in-kind support for the property owners in DMAT land acquisition. And could I call on a presentation here from Graham? Please bring us up to speed on what we're approving here tonight.
Is that where you want your resolutions then, Graham?
Absolutely, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So based on the discussion this morning, based on the discussion this morning, we broke down the resolutions as followed, which differs from the report, and so just want to feedback where we got to. So the first option? Um, so, the first option, uh, option one, there's three resolutions. Council endorses the policy direction, objectives. Council endorses the proposed outline for closeness for biodesign and implementation. And council directs staff to hold exploratory discussions with landowners and identify options and present findings to council for decision. Now, during the discussion today, you also identified, uh, the idea of breaking the policy objectives out into the, um, for individual ones, so that they'd be easy to find on the record, um, and that they'd be voted on individually. So, you can see that the wording for each of the recommendations adapted lightly from the original staff report, um, that are introduced as those, um, recommendations. So, Daniel, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to add to that from a corporate perspective?
Okay. Okay, so, I'm a bit confused. This will be 12A?
Well, yeah, so, I wasn't sure that Graham had this agenda item on here, so ignore the 12A, but we'll, we'll deal with stuff later. It's a long day.
So, long day. Okay, we're gonna deal with these right now then.
Correct. Let's get them on the way.
So, you, counsel, sticking to option one and two, we have a choice there in terms of grouping it together or breaking it out, but clearly, we need to go, as Counselor Krog pointed out, you can see the major headings in each of those, um, motions that would break it into individual motions, which seems to be the preference of the planning department and Graham, to, to give some clarity to what we're actually making decisions around. So, your choice, the top one is much cleaner, the bottom, option two is a little more complex. Your desire here, Counselor Krog?
Uh, I like the brevity of one, but option two, um, gives a little bit more information, but the reason that I don't like option two was that, um, in that second bullet where it says "all." Hey, he knew where it was.
I remember.
Yeah.
Okay.
He does that.
Okay, and, sorry, Kevin?
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to point out that if you go through with option one in terms of endorsing the policy objectives, you are still endorsing, uh, wording. It just is in the report instead than the resolution.
Okay, so, if we take "all" out of there, then option two?
And, and what I'm hearing is that it really doesn't matter one way or the other if you take "all" out of there? That it, it's not pertinent to the, to the motion?
No.
And it matters to me?
Yeah, it matters to me.
Counselor Krog? Um, you can do that by motion if you wish, and then we can proceed with option one and two.
Uh, do we need a motion to take "all," "all" of there, because it's disappeared now, so I like option two. I like, I would move option two.
All right, it looks like we've had some decision-making on the word "all." If it doesn't change the meaning of it, then it might be smoother here. And counsel, are you leaning towards option two?
Yes.
Head nod, head nod?
Deletion of the word "all."
Counselor Moslin?
Is it relocation within the city? The council endorses the objective to support viable and obtainable options for relocation of homeowners within the city.
Or regional district?
Uh, uh, yeah, well, like, that, that's what I'm asking. Is it, does it, where are we relocating them to?
We only have control over our own land, so I.
Yeah, so maybe it's within the city.
Yeah, within the city, okay.
Okay, then, let's proceed with option two, moving one motion at a time. Can we have the first motion, the council endorses the policy objective?
So.
So, Counselor Krog, Counselor Thompson, all those in favor? And moving to the second one, endorses the objectives to support viable and obtainable options to relocate, buy out respective means within the city. That motion? Counselor Krog still has his handle from the last time. Counselor Studley?
Most comfortable.
I'm commenting on, on this one. Kevin?
From? From, yeah, just a slight wording change suggestion where the cursor is "from," we're in, homeowners from the buyout area within the respective means, within the city. Uh, if we put "within the city," relocation within the city of homeowners from the buyout area, that makes it very clear.
Okay. And making that motion, is that come for two? Counselor Krog made the motion. Ready for a question on that? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Moving to number three, council endorses the objective of equity and fairness. A motion to adopt that.
Seriously?
Counselor Corlick, break it up a bit here. Second, and Counselor Thompson? And we did have quite a discussion over what that meant. I think there's a better understanding about equity and fairness at this point. Is there any further concerns on that policy? Hearing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? Council endorses the objective of making sound investment decisions.
Yep. Decision, decision.
Weird.
Sound investment.
Decision.
Decision.
Decisions.
Yeah, no, yours was right.
I'm dyslexic.
So, stand up, white people.
Sorry.
You guys are too old.
Okay. Do we have any concern about that? Hearing none? All those in favor? Counselor Krog made, no, Counselor Corlick made the motion. You seconded it. And we changed the wording slightly there, which you're comfortable with. And all those in favor? Opposed? All right. Um, where are we now to minimizing administrative complexity?
Yeah, we need to lose the "and" on that.
And, and on the "and."
So.
Counselor Krog, seconded by Counselor Thompson. And any explanations required in that statement? Keep it simple.
Keep it simple, all the people.
All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? That was late, but I think that was support.
I, I just don't think it's gonna be able, you're gonna be able to avoid complexities.
It's the objective. The key word is "objective." We're gonna try.
I, I guess so. I was out.
The last one, I think it's important that we get on was.
Yeah.
Identifying, uh, options by meeting, uh, and, uh, the exploratory discussions with the landowners, which is in the planning at this point.
Right on, Tom.
That motion?
Do we need to put a date on that?
Um, I think it's happening immediately. I don't know whether we need to push it any more than that. Am I to assume this is as quickly as we can do it?
We've identified some dates and prepared an advertisement in case of the, of this resolution passing. Um, the meetings would happen in the next few weeks and preliminary report back would be ready for August 12th, but I want to provide extra time in case there's additional discussion or feedback from council for September report. So, the September committee, the whole would be our timeline.
Okay, so, they are on a fast track on that. And the motion? Counselor Thompson seconded, Counselor Corlick. All those in favor? All right. That pretty much concludes that portion of it. It's down to the economic development resolution?
Oh, that's later.
We'll do that on the late items?
Yeah.
Okay, let's adjust that. We pick that up at 12A. We're on to the bylaws. And the first item is the financial plan of names.
Final reading?
Final reading. Counselor Thompson, final. Counselor Zelinski seconded. Further discussion on this? All those in favor? Carrie? And the reserve fund establishment, again, this is for, uh, final reading, and we've beat this one up several times. Counselor Thompson moves. Seconded by Counselor Studley. Any further? All those in favor? So, the next one is the, um, hearing that we had today and relates to the property, um, 7600 block of 8th Street. And, uh, could I ask any further comment from planning on this matter?
Worship, this, this wasn't the hearing, it's the second one?
Yeah, this is the, um.
Oh, this is the agriculture, yes, I'm sorry, I just read that, yes. This is one that we did already some time ago, half the public. This is for final reading.
I'll move that.
Counselor Krog, Counselor Corlick seconded. Any question here? All those in favor? And the next one is the one I thought we were dealing with, which is the 2680 75th Avenue hearing that we just had. And again, back to, is there any comments that planning would like to make on this matter? It is a positive recommendation from planning on the development here for reasons that you've seen in your report that have to do with density and housing issues and trying to move forward with small-scale housing. Can we have a motion on this matter?
I'll make that motion.
Counselor Thompson gives third reading. Seconder, Counselor Corlick. Further discussion? Counselor Zelinski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A quick question to staff through you. When garden suites and tiny homes were put into the bylaw, um, there's usually clauses in the bylaw that says that, that a garden suite would not preclude a subdivision. Have we put that into, uh, our bylaw?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, who you? Um, no, not specifically. However, it does specify that they must be serviced from the main house and that they cannot be stratified. So, really, it's, it's a form of subdivision, so I'll take that back. Yes.
So, that's what we're doing here then? Is, a fellow built his duplex plus his tiny home and now he's asking for a subdivision of the tiny home to create a lot?
He, well, the rezoning would facilitate three new lots. Or, sorry, two new, one.
Okay, but, but right now, we have a duplex and a small house on one lot.
Correct.
And, and the reason that it's, um, uh, allowed there is because we're allowed a duplex and a garden suite on one lot.
That's correct.
But now, we're subdividing that garden suite off.
No.
The, um, garden suites.
Uh, if the subdivision were to go.
Yes.
Through, it would be reclassified as a dwelling, as a single family dwelling.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
So, so my fear is if we accept this and, and the question of precedence is set, then every zone that we allow a garden suite in, we can expect a rezoning to R3 so that they can subdivide.
R3.
R.
R3.
The application's for R2, actually.
Okay, so, R2 anyway, the, the small one?
Oh, it's still have to meet the, the lot size and setbacks, et cetera.
True, but we're opening up the door for every small, every residential lot out there in our R1 to become, um, a, a home for three families, because duplexes are allowed and garden suite is allowed. Even though the services may not support that on one lot, we're approving that.
That's correct. Um, that provision's within the zoning model for a while, to allow garden suites and duplexes, and the secondary suite is also allowed, which is in the house.
And we shouldn't allow subdivisions on that kind of thing.
Okay, so, Counselor Moslin?
Yes, your worship, I speak against the rezoning. Uh, I don't think that the plans for the development match the density of the neighborhood. Uh, I, I know the intent is to, I, I feel that we have stretched R1 far enough. You actually have one lot, uh, now holding three units. And what we're being asked to is to further subdivide the one lot and hold five units. And, uh, I'm finding that that is just a little bit, I'm a little apprehensive, as Counselor Zelinski is, that, uh, what we're really doing, it, it, you know, is any lot in the city, any residential R1 lot, can suddenly have, uh, be developed, uh, to five units. I, I, I find that just a bit, that's really stretching it. I, I really admire the developer, admire the, the, um, resourcefulness of using old units and remodeling them and repurposing them. I certainly encourage them to grab some other lots and, uh, and do the same. I also have a concern here that, uh, one of the residents put, put came up, is that 27th is a problematic intersection, 27th and Central. Uh, that's the extra foods intersection that, if anybody's driven around, you know, we've been asked, we've been after highways to put a, a light there for, I don't know, somewhere, either there at Northwood, going back to my previous terms on council. And, uh, nothing. And so, that, that intersection is, uh, problematic and putting two more units on top of that, right, like, literally, on that intersection is, uh, not a good thing in my mind. Anyhow, so, your worship, I, I, I do, I do like to encourage infill, this is like infill plus, so, I'm speaking against it.
Counselor Thompson?
Well, speaking, uh, in favor of my resolution, um, there, it's been identified that there is a real shortage of affordable housing, rental units. Um, council, they encouraged, uh, this exact type of development. And, uh, this is, uh, for, for young couples starting out. I personally, I can't see that it's going to be, uh, a huge impact on either density or, uh, traffic. Um, and there are alternatives, um, from, from 27th Street, this way down, uh, 75th, either to North Park Franklin Road or down to 27th.
I, I speak in favor as well. I think that clearly this is what we're wanting to happen in the city and we should be elated to see a whole bunch of other people looking at higher densities and the use of larger single lots. So, I support it. I think that basically it's gonna add to the, um, functionality of that whole corner. It's close to shopping, it's close to schools, it will very much attract young families. As far as the traffic goes there, I agree that, you know, that is a traffic problem, but it's not really from people who live there, it's in fact created by the school, people coming and going, uh, through that area. So, I don't think this is gonna contribute a lot to an increase in traffic, and, and I support the motion. Further comment? Counselors, are you ready for a vote on this? This is to go to third reading to work out some issues with Ministry of Transport in terms of access and highways, uh, issues. And then we'll come back for a final reading to us. I support the motion. Ready to, for the call? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie?
Okay, um, oh my. We're down to late items, and this is the 12A. We're gonna take off the DMAP resolutions, which we got through, and we're down to the economic development resolutions. Um, this is the material that has come forward from the Economic Development Steering Team. Were they not called destination?
Yeah, could change that. Discover, actually, it's, it's gonna be Discover Grand Forks.
Yes, I'm sorry, Discover Grand Forks. We need to learn our terminology, Sam.
Worship, that's been a long.
Yes, it has. Okay, this is broken out into five separate motions by council.
Well, five, five, five separate points. Uh, it can be one resolution of council, and if council wants to change any of this beforehand, please let me know. Um, I can quickly speak to them. Uh, so, the first one was, uh, the, the item number three as of Roger Brooks's, uh, report, which had to do with the four-way stop on 2nd Street and Market. Uh, we're waiting on the ICBC recommendations to come back for that. So, if we, I left it in the list right now, but we could easily take it out because we don't know the answer yet, but I don't wanna really forget about it either. So, we bring it back in a month or two. Um, the second one was the Adopt a Market District. The second one was the Adopt a Market District area. So ideally, staff would start working on what it takes to designate that area. Support the mailing of the Best of Grand Forks brochures, that was item nine, through possibly utility billing, which shouldn't be an issue once that brochure is created in the fall or early, like January or something like that, with one of the billing cycles to send out that brochure.
Just a question on that.
Yeah.
How many are receiving their utility bills via email?
We could email it out too, but I'll be, or work with the organization on snail mailing some of them out.
Okay, just as long as it gets out, I just, you know.
That's the idea, yeah. And then the creation of a citywide wayfinding signage plan. I'm already working with Larry Olson from the province on the grant application for that. So again, it would just put instructions in front of staff to keep working on these. And then the development implement downtown bylaws regarding exterior displays, blade signs, retail mix, and other bylaws seen as beneficial, like a signage bylaw or something like that, where the exterior displays or blade signs could go under. Seen as beneficial for the marketing strategy. So I added that because there was other bylaws over the next year that staff could start looking into working on, that would be beneficial for the area. The retail mix was actually not specifically defined, but I think Amber mentioned it this morning. So I added it in here because it's not a bad idea to have that.
So you're looking for a resolution on that?
Yeah, basically that whole section here, the council supports and instructs staff. But do you want, does council want to remove the first item out of there for the time being?
No, I just leave everything in there. I'll make that motion.
And seconded by Counselor Korlick? Counselor Krog?
Yeah, I, we haven't heard from ICBC, right?
Yeah.
So, and I've always wanted not just second in Market, but this one too. We need some for, because people are creeping out and there's all kinds of stuff.
Well, you get big trucks and you can't see.
Yeah, so we do need, I think we need more, and that might justify the $10,000.
So Counselor Studley and myself were the only ones at the ICBC meeting, where clearly this was talked about and where we asked for a special report. It's clear too that there may be other ways to achieve the desired slowdown of traffic and definition of the downtown. And so I let it stand in terms of the agenda. I think that we need to be cautious with this one, that we weigh all of those other considerations.
Oh, absolutely.
And the other thing with ICBC is they're looking at more than simply this. There's a whole package of support that we'll get from them if we play ball with safety concerns within the city. So we need to be cautious with this, but I don't feel that this motion commits us to a final decision on that nor a final funding.
No, it's just a recommendation.
Right. So the motion's on the table and seconded? Ready for the question on these matters? All those in favor? Opposed? Was that it?
Well, it's at that later, determined at a later point, so it's moving over.
Okay, some of the issues of where the money comes from?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And now we're looking at a couple of other items related to the Brooks recommendations. Counselor Maslin has been requested to join the Discover Grand Forks team. Counselor Maslin, would you accept that kind of responsibility on top of everything else you're doing? Check with Kathy, give her a call.
You know, we've been at it here, only because there is so much other things.
Right, and I understand that, I'm not joking here. I think that there should be some caution in terms of overdoing yourself.
I'm trying to do the work on the social services group. I'm all over my head in DMAP already. I, you know, perhaps, Your Worship, I'll accept it to begin with. Because what I'll try to do is, as much as possible, hand over the trails information that I have. Because I think that's what they want me, right?
Yep.
They don't want me because I'm good looking. They want my trails in full, right?
Their request was for somebody that, preferably somebody that's involved with trails already.
Yeah, I know. So I will accept that, if council will approve it, on a temporary basis, if you don't mind, Mayor?
No.
So that maybe in four months' time, when they've heard all they're gonna hear from me about trails, another councillor could.
Okay, so I moved to appoint Counselor Maslin at this point and hope that he stays on. Seconded by Counselor Zelinski. All those in favor? Okay, thank you, councillor. And Counselor Ibran Studley, under 40, has been asked to be on the professional group, and this is the millennial group that we all talked about. Again, I think my vision of this is that we're not asking Counselor Studley to chair it as much as to be the liaison, that this group would have some independent abilities, and it will be further defined before we move forward on this. Council will be directly involved in setting the parameters for their activity. Councillor, I make the motion and Counselor Ibran Studley be appointed as council liaison to the millennial group or young professional group. Second, Counselor Thompson. Further discussion? Are you ready for that challenge?
Eva?
You are. All those in favor? Carried. And the final item on late items is council remuneration. Council instructs staff to proceed with a review of council remuneration. The process to be completed by the end of January, or February 2020. So a pretty long timeline on that, but if it gets done earlier, if it gets done earlier, we can decide when it is implemented or accepted. Making that motion. Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Korlick. Discussion? Apparently the mayor is underpaid and all of you are overpaid. You saw Nigel's point. Make sure he's on the committee. All those in favor?
Well, it depends what's to say.
Yeah, it does.
Carried. All right. And that brings us to the end of this exciting day. We have questions from the gallery, and I ask if there's anyone who wishes to bring anything forward from the gallery to stand and speak. You standing last?
Les Johnson, taxpayer gftv.ca. So, question. If an elderly person here in this community who has been using cannabinoids for helping treat whatever their problem is, whether it's they can't keep their food down because of taking cancer medication or whatever, if they want to procure some pot to help them get through the day and keep their food down, how far do they have to travel? Can anybody tell me that? Okay, go ahead.
The nearest computer.
Okay?
Yeah, nearest mailbox.
Okay, so what if they want to travel to the United States? Because officials from the federal government have pointed out that if you do that, you have to, if you buy that online, by mail, you have to use a credit card, some sort of financial instrument. You cannot walk in and pay cash, which means that your information, that you buy pot, goes into a database somewhere. And if that data becomes available to the border protection people in the states, they can look it up, and they can find out, and they can ask you that question. Do you smoke pot? And if you lie to them, guess what? You don't get to go down to the states anymore.
That happened to me.
We know what happened.
Counselor Zelinski?
Let's be clear that there's a difference between purchasing it and using it. So I don't know what question they'd ask at the border, but you asked where they can source pot, and I.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get to the answer.
So, yeah.
Okay, so if you do not, if a person does not wish to put themselves in that jeopardy, how far do they have to travel? Can anybody answer that one to me?
There are no stores open currently in Grand Forks, and we're not sure when they will be open. The medicine treatment was operating illicitly is now shut down.
So cannabis, you have to go to Kamloops, because that's the only store in the interior of BC that I'm aware of that's open for legal.
I think we'll see Nelson fairly quickly here, quicker than Grand Forks.
Okay, so a number of years ago, a documentary was made called Cannabis. And the people who made that documentary, they looked for a place in BC where a significant portion of the local economy was driven by cannabis. But it wasn't all ganged up with all the associated violence and everything else. And they picked this town. Now, I just find it rather ironic that as time goes on and the product actually becomes illegal in this whole nation, that the reactionary forces here want to basically put all kinds of roadblocks in the way of pot stores. And like the mayor just pointed out, the medical cannabis dispensary has been shut down. So this idea of a hundred-yard or hundred-meter setback, I mean, let's see, how far is it from the liquor store to Jarrow Park, which is the community use facility that you just shut down weeds and glass because of, because they're within 100 meters of Jarrow Park? You can literally walk from there holding your breath. And across the street, there's another liquor store. And if you go down the road, there's a distillery across from the high school. Yet, we don't want pot stores within 100 meters of a community use facility. And when the public hearing was here, I really wish I'd stood up. With a public hearing on, the cannabis outlet potentially on Donaldson Drive, when it happened, we had a whole bunch of people crawl out of their woodwork who were completely anti-pot. And generally speaking, the argument they put forth was the canard about kids. It's like, oh gee whiz, I mean, do we give liquor stores the same kind of drubbing? Because alcohol's bad for developing brains, et cetera, et cetera? No, we don't. They can't sell to kids. Same thing with illegal pot stores. They can't sell to kids. Yet, for some reason, this previous council, and what I've heard here in front of this council, keeps dragging that same thing out. I'm sorry, that does not obtain. When they put a striped rainbow crosswalk right outside City Hall, we have all these people coming out of the woodwork going, oh, we don't want to push this. They'll be truly aggressive. It's like we're going back to the 50s. So my question, which is, oh, it's completely facetious, but if one of these people who are just so outraged by the new things in the world sees a boy kissing a boy or a girl kissing a girl, and sends off and asks whether the council say, how can you allow this? What are you gonna do? Are you gonna seriously consider that? I ask, why are you seriously considering this? A bylaw is a bylaw. What are variances for? Exactly. I mean, really, what are variances for? If not to point out that under certain conditions, the bylaw that one size fits all doesn't fit everything. But hey, I just had the same with peace, because it's awful upsetting. I'm sorry, but really, if I have to drive to Kamloops to buy pot, I'm not saying I smoke it, but if I have to drive all the way to Kamloops to buy pot, or I have to put my ability to cross the border in legal jeopardy by ordering it online, all because reactionary forces here and provincially have decided that we're gonna put as many roadblocks as we can in the way of legal pot sales? It's ridiculous. I mean, the other day on CBC, they pointed out that the cost of legal pot is $10 and change a gram, and the cost of black market pot is five and change a gram. They're like a 43% increase. So if you don't want legal pot stores here, I know for sure there's lots of pot in the community, you're driving people to the black market. And you're putting them, think about the seniors, you're putting them in legal jeopardy. That's my piece.
Thank you very much, Les. And anything further? Yes, ma'am?
People could try ordering marijuana from Alberta.
Yeah, if you're ordering it, you have to buy online, you have to use a credit card or some other financial instrument which identifies you.
PayPal, yeah.
Yes?
The other thing with ordering online, everyone's assuming everyone has a computer. And a lot don't. And another thing I would like to bring, I'm really sad that with what's happening about Donaldson and stuff like that, and also what's been going on and remarks with the whispers of hope. But even, I thought that float in Canada Day was perfect. They were so happy, and the warming center, we should be so happy we have a warming center, that people have a warm place to go. Before, it used to be it had to be zero, which is nonsense. I'm just really sad what's going on in Grand Forks also with the whispers of hope. And now that the weeds is shut down, is now are we gonna hear that they won't be granted that the warming center can stay there? Like, I don't know, it's really sad.
Thank you, Trish. Anything further from the gallery?
We, am I in the gallery?
No.
No, I just, I think there are three pot stores so far.
Where?
You're going in.
Two, I think.
Who knows?
Two of them both?
No, there's Chocks.
Yeah, Chocks? Baggies?
There's a dollar market.
Yeah. Dollar market.
Total change of subject.
Yeah, please.
But thank you, council, for the bike rack in front of our store. It has been full almost every single day, even in the rain, since it was installed.
Great. Yeah, it feels like we're working with the DVA. Counsel, can I have a motion to adjourn? So adjourned. Yeah, you guys.